Alright, everyone, we're gonna open a meeting, and please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the October 7th, 2024, meeting of the zoning board of appeals, or ZBA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBA present here this evening, myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly, our vice chairman, Mr. Carl Hinger is with us, our secretary, Mr. Elijah Hewling, regular member commissioner, Mr. Richard Briggs should be here very shortly, we'll count him absent for now. Regular member commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer is with us this evening. Alton member commissioner, Mr. Liam Annea is with us, Alton member commissioner, Mr. Michael Barnes is with us this evening. Our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lally is with us this evening. And our always very professional and fabulous recordings secretary Cassandra Varian is with us this evening. The current agenda can be found here, at the table, or on the town website, under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the secretary will read into the record any communications we've received in favor or opposed to the application. The chair will then entertain questions of clarification from board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting, and will deliberate and open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved, have submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You're welcome to stay until the end of the meeting, or contact the Land Use office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, first thing on the agenda this evening is a review of the September 9th, 2024 minutes. Like to take a motion to approve minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, until Commissioner Briggs gets in here, will you sit in for Commissioner Briggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnes, thank you very much. Is there any discussion? I have one teeny tiny thing, it's an ad. Anybody?
Just you.
Okay, so zone, uh, let me get it out here in front of me. So it is on page three, line 116. Commissioner Rushmeyer, this one involves you, it was an ad, just let me know if it's correct, sir. Alright, so, right after, as small as possible, I wanted to add, Commissioner Rushmeyer explained that there are options both in shrinking the size of the room, and I thought this was important, that's why I wanted it in there, and moving it around back, and was not in favor of the application to which the Chairman Donnelly agreed. Does that sound correct, sir?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. Anybody else, anybody else? Alright, like to take a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor of approving amended minutes say aye.
Aye.
Alright. We are going to move on to our first application, which is Z-24-54, which is 13 Alexander Drive, that's Edward Waterbury Residence, and that is for, it's two variances, I'm gonna read them here. Structure to the rear lot line, required dimension of 30 feet, proposed dimension of 5 feet, variance requested is 25 feet, and that is Article 3.5. The second one is a structure to the right sideline, required dimension is 30 feet, proposed dimension is 5 feet, the variance requested is 25 feet, and that is Article 3.5.
I'm gonna be recusing myself, because I know the applicant.
Good. You were recused, Mr. Secretary. Commissioner Annea, will you sit in for?
Yes.
The secretary, okay. You get to be the secretary on this one, is that okay? Okay, thank you very much. Alright, with the applicant or proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, sir.
Edward Waterbury, 13 Alexander Drive. We're here to put up a, we wanna put up a shed on our property. We have a point 29 acres, and we'd like to put it in the backyard, in the back corner. And we want, don't want it to stick out too far in the middle of the backyard, so we'd like to bring it over as close to the back, um, backside, the back of the block, and the farther so over to the right side, so it's be 5 feet away from each.
That's the rear eastern corner, sir?
That would be east.
Says east.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Yep. Anything else? No, that's, I don't know what else.
You like this one, right?
No, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Secretary Annea, is there any correspondence on this?
I don't know, sir.
I don't think so. Alright, do any commissioners have any questions?
I had a question whether this property's been upzoned.
Yeah.
I mean, it's only 12,000 square feet, it's a tiny piece of property. And, and being R40 zone would normally require much more square footage. This is, this is closer to an R7.
What does that mean?
Okay.
Sorry.
I did some research on it, you can ask Mr. Lally on that if you'd like, it is.
Well, it was, yeah.
It's a pre-existing non-conforming upzone, looks pretty heavily upzoned to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a pretty serious upzone, yeah.
On R40? Yeah, that's what I saw. So you're in an R, you're in an R40 zone now, which is 40,000 square feet?
And you're only 12,000.
You're at 12,000, so you should be somewhere between an R7 and R15.
And an R15, right, which would have different setbacks, so that was, that was the only question I got.
I don't understand you.
Um, well, it could be, and I'm not gonna speak for other members here, but it could be something that's considered as a hardship on the property that you've been, you've been upzoned. So really, you're in a zone that's supposed to have more land to it, and you have less land. So it's been upzoned over the years, if that makes sense.
The setback numbers are different for the other zones, that's, that's why I asked the question. Because you're asking for modification for the setback.
Do any other commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I had a quick one. I see on the GIS map that you provided, a lot of your neighbors also seem to have sheds in like the corners of their properties as well, is that?
That's correct, yeah.
You wouldn't happen to know if they got variances for it, or if that was all pre-existing?
I didn't get a letter.
Okay, yeah, it was just curious.
We do have an answer to that question.
Okay.
As I checked it. So, I'll wait till everybody else is done.
I think I had the same comment to make as.
You saw the other sheds in the neighborhoods and stuff?
Yeah, and it seemed like they were, they would have been in maybe an R15 zone based on the dimensions?
Yeah, 7 or 15, that's what I'm thinking. Commissioner Rushmeyer?
I, I was just wondering if you could pull that up on Google Maps, the property.
Is that okay with you, sir? Can I bring it up on?
Sure.
You want it Google or the GIS?
GIS is fine.
Okay. I'm gonna put you up on the big screen. And I believe, is it somewhere right around here where I have the arrows, or?
That's correct, yeah.
It's somewhere, it's tucked in this.
It'd be in that corner, yeah.
Corner right here.
And eight other lots?
Well, he's got one tucked up there, if you pull up. Oh, it's not showing it, but it's, there's one right up here.
One there, the next piece of property has one there, so.
Yeah, the next one has one.
They're all in a similar thing, they're all tucked in.
I'm anxious to hear what you found, Mr. Commissioner, in that regard.
Alright, so, I thank you very much for letting me go out to your property, I really appreciate it. So I did a little bit of research with Amy and Land Use, and the 14 Alexander, 15 Alexander, 12 Alexander, and 18 Alexander all have variances on file. I did look up the exact, I'm gonna read them, I got them in here somewhere, but they do have variances. Most of them, I think it's for the sheds there. 11 and 16 do not have any variances right now on file. Just letting you know the due diligence I did on that. So 11 and 16, there's no variances. 14, 15, 12, and 18 do have variances on file. Thank you. I have a couple of quick questions for you.
Sure.
I drew a little map, might come forward to this other, it's a really simple question, and I understand your reasoning behind it, but, okay, this is your property. I did pull the septic as built, and the septic comes out and it's in your front yard, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so the front yard is on the kind of northwestern area side of the property, that's where the septic is?
Yes.
That look correct? That it comes out, and then there's a tank, and then there's three fields off of that. And then where you wanna put it is in this back little corner here. I did measure, you do have a well there, and I did some quick measurements. From this corner of the house, the well is about 1310, that's to the, to the well cap. And then from this corner, it's about 13 feet, does that look about where your well is?
Uh, yeah, I'd say so, yeah.
Okay, so 1310 from there and 13 feet to there. Alright, so, my question is this, have you, did you, I know that's the most easiest, obvious spot where you'd like to put it, did you consider any other ultimate spots, like moving it over a little bit? Or maybe being 10 feet away by 10 feet away, did you think about any, anything else?
Could do that, but it's kind of eaten into the backyard, but that's.
But if it was a little, if it was a little farther out, you know, and you're basically 5 feet away from the border, right? 5 feet on one side, 5 feet by the other, and then the shed is 10 feet by 12 feet?
Yes.
Okay, so, if, you've considered that, right? Maybe bringing it down a little bit more, and I understand you're tucking it away to keep more of the backyard stuff, but that's, that's something that you've considered?
I haven't considered it until now.
I mean, if it was a consideration, and the commissioners felt, hey, I'm not saying what everybody's gonna do, but they may maybe see the hardships on the property, maybe they see something else, would you consider maybe shrinking it a little bit, instead of, instead of it being 25 feet, maybe, maybe it's 20? You know, a little bit, 5 feet, yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
And I'm sorry.
Is that, is that a possibility?
Away from the back by 10 feet, and off to the side from 10 feet to 10 feet.
Right, so instead of 5 feet from the rear and 5 feet from the side, maybe 10 feet and 10 feet, it's just, you can say no, it's okay. It's just, if that was a possibility, is that something that you'd?
10 feet would be two of me.
What's that?
10 feet would be two of me.
Two of you, right?
It's one of you now.
So if you can't find it, you're gonna be you, right?
Right. Consider it, sure.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any? Oh, one last question, the hardships. So the hardships on the property, could you please re-explain them? Like one of them Commissioner Barnes brought up, which would be the upzoning on the property. Are there any other hardships that you can see on the property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Any other questions? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application.
Other than us?
We know you're in favor. Hearing none, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Mr. Waterbury, Mr. Waterbury, you have the final concluding remarks, whatever you'd like to say.
All I would like to say really is, I appreciate your consideration, and, you know, we've been on the property for 32 years, and can now finally afford to put a shed on there, something we've wanted to do since we moved in. And so we're looking forward to being able to do that, hopefully.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Any last minute questions for the commissioners? Alright, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z-24-54, please.
So moved.
Do I, hold on, you're not on this one? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, everybody's on this one. Yeah, everybody's on this one. Okay, do I have a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to our second application. Alright, this is application Z-24-62, the Ann Farley Residence, and that is 150 North Lake Shore Drive, Brookville, Connecticut. The applicant agent is Mr. Ted Catino. And this is for a structure to the left sideline, and I believe it's a deck. Proposed dimension is 6 feet 5 and 3/4 inches. The variance requested would be 3 feet 6 and 1/4 inches, and that is Article 3.5. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
My name is Ted Catino, I'm the applicant, working for the Farleys.
Welcome to the zoning board of appeals, again, sir.
Thank you, nice to be here again. And as you said, the address is 150 North Shore Lake Drive. And, so, we had the benefit of a great deal of input last time. And what we did is we went back and we redesigned, basically, based on our comments and et cetera. And the intention, and hopefully you'll agree that we have, you know, in fact, provided that. The intention is, you know, to minimize what exactly we're asking for in terms of a variance. So we had a much larger deck previously proposed, which intruded into the rear setback substantially. So, one thing that we're, we're doing is, you know, we're cutting that back, so the entire deck is within the rear setback of the property. We however, still have an existing, previously existing intrusion into the side setback.
Left side.
Which is, left side, which is represented by that, that landing, which is, is the access currently to the side of the, of the house, as well as a storage space below, which is part of the basement. So that's, 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 that's where that 3 foot 6 and 1/4 dimension comes from. It's literally, we're maintaining that, and we have no intention to get rid of it. So, the idea is that we're incorporating a portion of deck, which follows a line of that current setback intrusion, to basically connect the rear, the deck, to the side yard and provide access to it, provide egress from it, you know, and the, and basically the hardship is that we have something, you know, an existing condition
Pre-existing non-conforming, right?
And we're trying to, you know, for lack of a better word, legalize it, I guess, because it was never really presented previously, so now it gives us an opportunity to go ahead and do that. But with the, with the hope that we can use some, you know, additional space, and as you can see, I mean, the space that we're talking about is very minimal, to provide access to our, you know, new deck and, and the rear of the property. Now, previously, we were also, you know, so that's, that is the, the, the appeal that we're, that we're asking for, in a nutshell.
Thank you, sir.
I am more than happy to go through the drawings, you know, to show the, you know, the full impact of what we're doing in terms of, of overall project, but I don't necessarily think it's, you know, it's relevant to what we're doing right here. But I'm happy to do so if anyone wanted to go through that. I mean, it's all represented in the drawings that, you know, I did already submit, et cetera.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Mr. Secretary, do we have any correspondence on this?
No, sir.
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any commissioners that have any questions?
Did you wanna put Liam on for this one, or me?
Yep, sorry, thank you. Commissioner Barnes is on this application, I should have called that before him. Thank you. You're on the first one. Do you have any questions?
No, he was very thorough last time in discussing everything that was going on with this, so it's pretty obvious. Looked at the property before, so it's pretty clear what, what he's looking for here.
Is that what you're trying?
No, I, I agree, it was all very in-depth last time, but I'm good.
We remember the last meeting, sir. Commissioner Rushmeyer?
What's the method in which, are you gonna knock down the existing structure, or are you gonna add on to the existing structure?
The existing structure at the basement level? That's staying in place.
And, and above that?
And above that, there's an existing deck. So we're gonna replace the deck, I mean, make it new, so that it's new materials, et cetera, you know, conforming with the slightly newer look that we're providing. If you want me to, like.
Nope, I'm good.
Yep.
So the garage, the pre-existing garage currently is gonna be turned into a bathroom, master suite?
It's gonna be turned into a, a suite, not a master, but it's a suite, you know, bedroom with a closet and a, and a bathroom for Mrs. Farley.
And so that, that's now pushing the garage out in front of the structure?
That's correct. And so, we are going to provide a garage, but we devise a way of connecting and attaching it to the existing house by a covered walkway and entry. And so, whereby, you know, we like, we're eliminating that request, per se.
I think the last meeting went through a lot, and it looks like they did a lot of homework.
This is the way it looks to me, Commissioner?
Agreed.
Commissioner, any questions for you?
Secondly, Commissioner Rushmeyer said we looked through this pretty thoroughly, I think, in the last meeting.
Real quick, I agree with everybody. You already went over the hardships of pre-existing non-conforming. So am I correct, you're actually taking the pre-existing non-conforming, and you're making it a little bit, we're talking inches, but you're making it smaller than last time, right? You were asking on the old application for 4 feet, and now it's only 3 feet 6 and 1/4 inches.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Currently what, what it is, he's not adding on to the pre-existing non-conforming, they're building the deck over.
Right, right, well, the last one, the pre-existing non-conforming was a 4 foot. Well, it was a 4 foot, right, on the last one?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, and that was a pre-existing non-conforming, so you're not, not really approving it because you're not making it bigger or anything, you're just rebuilding it, and it's actually a little bit smaller, that's.
I'd like to say we're not.
It's a little bit inches more.
We're not impacting further, and, and, you know, we're minimizing the amount of impact that we're, we're asking for, basically.
Last question, in your opinion, would it, would this be an intensification or a reduction in the pre-existing non-conforming? I think I answered my own question. It's kind of a reduction, isn't it?
Reduction, yeah.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this application. Hearing none, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Mr. Catino, you have the final concluding remarks, sir, whatever you'd like to say.
Of course, you know, we're, we're glad, and, you know, and that you're taking a look at this, and hopefully, you know, you'll find a way to approve it. Certainly will help out, you know, Mrs. Farley, who's owned this property. And I think, you know, we went through that whole history, history last time.
Yeah, she was there with him.
And certainly will make her happy, you know, and that's the reason why I do this, but it would certainly be one of the benefits on our end, so we appreciate that.
Thank you very much, thank you. Alright, at this time, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z-24-62.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Alright, so what we're gonna do now, you probably remember this, sir, is we're gonna go into what's called closed deliberations. We basically discuss the applications amongst ourselves, and we'll come to a decision tonight. We ask you to please be patient, and we'll chime in or anything while we're talking. Thank you very much, thanks for your patience. Okay. I would like to take a motion. Okay, I'd like to take a motion to approve, and Commissioner Annea, you're on this one, sir.
Yeah.
They're both on this?
What's that?
They're both on this.
Yeah, both on this.
One, one, two, yeah, that's right, you're both on it. Alright, I'd like to take a motion to approve application Z-24-54, and that is for a structure to the rear lot line 30 feet, proposed dimension is 5 feet, variance requested would be 25 feet, and that's Article 3.5. And structure to the right sideline 30 feet, proposed dimension is 5 feet, variance requested is 25 feet, and that is Article 3.5, and this is for a storage shed 10 by 12. I'd take a motion to approve this amendment.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I thought, as Commissioner Barnes has said, that it was pretty obvious that there's an upzoning there, and that, that puts some pretty tight restraints on what they can do, especially where they place the shed. And I think if, I think that would be a genuine hardship that they could claim.
Thank you. Commissioner Rushmeyer?
I would just remind everyone that prior variances are not precedent, right? And I think I would be inclined to look favorable upon this request if we were able to get the setback reduced, maybe, as you pointed out, 10 feet from each sideline, the rear and side boundaries.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Secretary?
He's your deputy.
Oh, sorry, he's the secretary. Yes, Commissioner Barnes?
I agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer that it's, it's an R7-sized piece of property, so.
It's been upzoned.
And it's been upzoned, so setbacks that are meeting the R7 requirements would seem to be in order.
But you're okay with it, his suggestion, maybe reducing it?
I, I'm reducing it to the 10 feet, because it's 10 feet for an R7 zone, so.
Yeah, I was.
Sir.
Yeah, I, I agree, but the other commissioners have said the setbacks for an R7 zone are only 10 feet. I think 30 is a bit excessive for a property of this size. So I, I understand the idea of changing, or of granting a variance to reduce the setback down to 10 feet. That being said, given, I know it's not a precedent, but given that the nature of the neighborhood is that everyone has sheds very close to the property lines.
It would be in harmony with.
Even, I think even 5 feet would be in harmony with the neighborhood. I know it's not a precedent that they have variances, but I think that their ask is within harmony of the neighborhood, so I don't, I would say I don't need the variance to be moved to 10 feet. I'm comfortable with it at either 5 or 10.
I agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer, I agree with everybody here, I think a reduction is in order. Definitely, it's been heavily upzoned, I can see that, that is a hardship on the property. But, like Commissioner Rushmeyer pointed out, it's, you know, if somebody else has got sheds in the corner and they've gotten variances in the past, that's no consideration to us. But I'm comfortable with it if we reduce it and made it 10 feet by 10 feet. Would somebody like to make that stipulation?
Tell me if that's a question.
Okay, so reducing it.
Reducing structure to rear lot line.
Instead of the variance being 25 feet and 25 feet.
Make the variance.
20 and 20?
20 and 20.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
A second. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, everybody's ready, right? Of approving Z-24-54 with the stipulation, and that's a structure to the rear lot line, required dimension is 30 feet, proposed dimension is 5 feet, but that's going to be 10 because of the stipulation. Am I right here?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. And the variance requested is not 25 feet, it's 20 feet, and that's Article 3.5. And structure to the right sideline.
required dimension is thirty feet, the, uh, stipulation would be ten feet, and the variance requested would be twenty feet, and that is Article three dot five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Motion passes, congratulations, thank you very much. Moving on to our next application? Okay. So we have on this, Commissioner Barnes, you're on this one, right? Everybody else, Commissioner Amia, you're on this one. All right, I'd like to take a motion to approve application Z dash twenty-four dash sixty-two, and that is a structure to the left sideline, and this is a deck, required dimension is ten feet, the proposed dimension is six feet, five and three quarters inches, and the variance requested would be three feet, six and one quarter inches, and that is zoning regulation three dot five, I'd like to take a motion to approve as submitted.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
It's pretty simple for me. Good with it, I think they did a great job with some.
From last time to this time?
They're not, it, from what I can tell, from what I've heard, they're not increasing the pre-existing non-conforming, they're just updating it, which, I'm good with that.
Agreed. Commissioner Rushmeyer?
I feel the same.
Agreed, Mr.
Yep.
Agreed. I agree too, it's, it's not, uh, intensifying a pre-existing non-conforming, it's actually reducing it, a very small amount, but it's a reduction in it, so, uh, and no problem with it, and the hardships on this property, everybody sees, is the, the upzoning. Is he upzoned as well, yeah?
No, I believe this is still an R seven.
Yeah, this looks correct, this is R seven.
It's just a pre-existing non-conforming. The structure is very close to the law.
Pre-existing non-conforming that's being technically reduced.
Right.
All right, everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Ready? All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-four dash sixty-two, that is the Ann Farley residence, and that is for a deck, that is a structure to the left sideline, uh, required dimension is ten feet, proposed dimension is six feet, five and three quarters inches, that's a deck, the variance requested would be three feet, six and one quarter inches, and that is Article three dot five, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Approve, sir. Thank you very much, have a good evening. Okay. Ah, the meeting schedule. All right, moving on, uh, the proposed twenty twenty-five meeting schedule. Anybody have any discussion on that, I think everybody has the same discussion, I'm thinking.
That, that, yeah, July seventh back to the fourteenth, so that we don't have conflicts with the fourth of July weekend.
Yeah, which is on a Friday.
Yeah, so people might be away and not back by Monday, or varying.
It's okay with you, Mr. Rushmeyer?
Yeah, still recovering.
Yeah, July fourth is on a Friday this year, the meeting would be on this, uh, Monday the seventh, so, pump it forward to the fourteenth.
I've heard of it.
And do we have to make a motion on that or anything, or just say?
You can make a motion, that's all, make a motion, you have a second.
I'd like to take a motion to move the July seventh meeting to the July fourteenth, please.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right. Okay, that meeting's moved. Anything on any of the other meetings? Anything else looks good? Looks, looks good with me.
Yeah, everything else looks fine.
Yeah, it's, it's a good calendar, okay. Um, update, still not a good month for Chairwoman Fox, uh, however, uh, she did say possibly next month or December, that's when things slow down in wetlands, to come in and give us our.
When everything freezes.
Yeah, when everything.
It's Iceland. Much to get another flood.
It'll be a lot slowed down by that, you know, everybody's dying to have that class, I am. Okay, I, I think that's it. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
All second.
Lots of seconds. All those in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
That was good?
Is that a record?
Is that a record? It's definitely a record for me. Really?
Thirty-five minutes.
That's a world record. For me? Well, you guys, you guys asked all the questions I asked, so, made sense of asking the same questions over again.
Oh, and that thing works, right?
That was good. That was really good. So we have, uh, we have, we changed that one, all right? To ten feet, ten feet and ten feet.
Mr. Rushmeyer?
Yes, sir.
What are, what are our next steps, do we, uh?
Um, this alone, would you like to explain this one?
Yep, and now you do the shed application? The shed application itself? Cause it, uh, we changed that one from a var- to a variance, so you have to, go have to resubmit for the application? Show them, the, the distances of ten feet on the application. I'll call you tomorrow.